I'd like to welcome everyone to East Dundee's regular meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, March 17th, 2025. I've got six o'clock, happy fad these days, by the way. Franco, if you'll take the role.
Trustee Sauter.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Present.
Trustee Mahoney is absent. Trustee Britton.
Here.
And President Lyne.
Here.
If you rise with me for the pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that'll take us on to our public comment section. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on either an agenda or a non-agenda item?
I have one.
You have one?
Yes. Just for the minutes records, trustee Mahoney entered at 6:01 PM. Public comment, I have Dolores Dodderline.
Okay. Dolores?
You have number one?
Yep.
Well, my concern is the 110 Blue Road Street. My address is 110 Blue Road Street. And we have some arrangements to keep it that way, we hope, because I can't possibly change all my addresses at 100. And, but more concerned, I'm concerned with the Green Building. In the contract, it said you will keep it if at all possible, not once, but several times. And that is not a wishy-washy statement. I hope that that statement is in any contract that you would send out, that they would keep it if at all possible. The Green Office, it's kind of a, a period mark. It's a 1925, 2325 building, it's over 100 years old. I would like to see it go into an East Dundee, not even sell that little park, but have an East Dundee museum. We need more things down here where people can go visit free. They can visit the depot when it's open. They can, that's the only place that they can visit. I mean, you have to go and take them into the bar or to the restaurants where they all have wine. They need a little playground, and they need someplace to go. And I think it would be nice if East Dundee would say, this little piece is East Dundee's, and you can build around it. But that's up to you. However, if, if the people cannot use the Green Building, it was said that they would donate it back to the Dodderline family, and if they wanted to, they could move that Green Building. I don't know whether my children want to move it or not, but we'll wait and see. In that building is a bank vault. The bank vault, the first bank that went bankrupt in 1920s. And it's a great big heavy, heavy door with carbon dioxide, what do I think it is, carbon dioxide in the door. So if they ever tried, they tried to get in there once. And if they had succeeded, they would have been overcome. It's a regular old bank door with a lock and everything. And another relic that's in there is the scale. These are all cemented into the floor. You can't get them out unless you destroy it. So if you're going to destroy the house, I would like to save those two relics, either for myself or for the Dundee Historical Society. And I hope that there would be a lot of communications before the contract even goes out, because they need to be clear of what they're getting. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody else, yes, we have anyone else who'd like to address the board?
No, no one else.
No? Okay, we'll move on then. We have no announcements, so we're going to go into our consent agenda. It's a long one, but if we could have a motion.
Can I, before we make a motion, pull off two items?
If you'd like, sure.
Item F and item J, please.
Okay.
Okay, I will move to approve executive session meeting minutes dated April 15th, 2024, June 24th, 2024, July 15th, 2024, April 7th, 2024, November 18th, 2024, and January 13th, 2025. I will also move to accept the warrant list in the amount of $464,560.81 and in the amount of $236,212.41. I will also move to approve a special ordinance authorizing the ceding of private activity bonding authority. I will also move to approve an ordinance granting variation, Section 151.006 B5B regarding fence height requirements for 304 Hill Street and 309 Jackson Street, East Dundee, Illinois, 60118, located in the B1 Downtown Business District. I'm sorry, Sarah, can you repeat those two items you want to take out?
F and J.
F and J, thank you. I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the application of a King County grant, Victoria Riverfront Boat Funds and Execution of Funding Agreement. I will move to approve an ordinance authorizing execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of real property located at 120 East Relroad Street. I will move to approve an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for improvement under the Illinois Code to expend $460,000 in motor fuel tax funds in the fiscal year 2025. And I will most, I'll move to approve an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code to expend $188,000, $188,485,026 in rebuild Illinois funds in fiscal year 2025 for engineering services and construction costs associated with the Summit Avenue Storm Sewer System and Street Improvement Project.
Are there any questions, concerns, comments on any of this? No? Franco?
Trustee Sauter? Yes. Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, if we could have a motion then for item F. Sarah, would you like this?
Sure, I'll move to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of East Dundee and King County for a non-exclusive license agreement for the design, construction, and maintenance of a canoe launch site. Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to pull it off for a little bit of discussion and make sure it's clear that this is specifically for the canoe launch and is not in any way, shape, or form a decision about Water Street at that spot. And a, and a design of Water Street for that spot. I just wanted to be sure of that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Canoe launch over.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that very clearly publicly, that this is the canoe launch and not the Water Street portion.
Okay.
Could I ask, is this, you know, once we approve this, are we locked in with the location of this launch being at that park, Bartles Park? Or would we be able to put it somewhere else in the future if we wanted to? That's the question.
I'm going to guess that, that's a good question. I'm going to guess it's, as of right now, in the location where it's been designed and intended to be constructed. I spoke with the county and asked if there's any intentions of them taking it back at any point. I said, we have a desire to keep and maintain this boat launch as long as it'll be functional and in good operating condition. And they said, thought that that would be fine. But as far as relocating it, I did not really discuss that at all.
Yeah, according to the plans, the plans are attached as exhibit A, and that's where it's indicated to go.
Right. No, I get that that's currently the plan. But I guess what I'm asking is, does this, does passing this lock that in, or could it still be moved?
Yeah, well, the box.
And let me ask you this, does this include the actual rental device? Or is this simply the boat launch?
No, it doesn't.
I see, okay, then, you know what?
This is just for the floating launch and a pathway to it.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
So can I ask if the term "non-exclusive license agreement" locks us in for any length of time, or is it going to have to be renewed regularly?
There's a, there's a term limitation. It's a two-year term. It will automatically renew for success of one-year terms unless it's terminated by either party.
By who?
By either party.
Oh, either party, okay. So if it were to be terminated by the village, would then we be on the hook for any investment on the county? Considering the fact that from the water line up to Water Street, that reconstruction of that site is going to be done with funds through the county, would we then have to remit any amounts of money back to the county if we were to terminate the agreement?
No, what they, what they talk about in agreement of termination is taking back the equipment. So removing that back out.
What costs to install?
Maintenance and improvements. The maintenance and improvements will be the responsibility of the... Yeah. It switches over at a certain point from the county to the village.
So after a certain amount of time, nothing can be clawed back by the county, correct?
Well, they can always take back the equipment.
Just the equipment, right. Assuming it's not.
Yeah, as far as fees, I don't see anything in here that calls for that.
And it's highly unlikely they're going to be constructing a concrete path down to the launch.
Right. I mean, there's a lot that's going into it. So I mean, I just want to make sure that the village isn't going to, you know, we, if we are going to be responsible for any monies that are going to go back to them in the event we pull out, we just need to know that upfront, so. And I didn't get that in the agreement, so. Okay, thanks, Sophie. Anybody else? Questions, concerns, comments? No? Franco?
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item J. Again, Sarah, if you'd like it, it's yours.
I'll move to approve a resolution of the Village of East Dundee of Cook and King Counties pursuant to Section 32.04F of the Village Code of Ordinances authorizing Police Chief Joshua Fordice to serve as city council member for the City of Woodstock, Illinois.
Second.
I have questions. Chief. When does Woodstock meet?
First and third Tuesdays of every month.
Tuesdays, okay. I thought it was Mondays, I just wanted to be sure.
If it was Mondays, I'd have been a nonstarter.
That was question number one. Question number two, there is salary involved here. I obviously can't force you to do anything. It strongly encouraged donation of the council member's salary.
That was my intent.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to say out loud. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this one? No? Seeing none.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to the regular agenda items. We have item A, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance of the Village of East Dundee, Cook, and King Counties, Illinois, adopting a comprehensive plan.
You got that out before I could say anything? I'd really like to switch this to discussion if we could and preserve the motion or, or carry the motion over to the next meeting. I don't know how that would work.
There was no second on the motion yet, so.
It's no.
I can withdraw my motion.
There you go.
Move to discussion.
We also don't have to just do it because I asked. I just wanted to put it out there.
I was going to say the same, so.
It's a lot, and probably the first time I've seen this.
Yeah.
So on Thursday or whenever this packet came out.
Okay. Then I'll take a, item B, if we could have a motion.
But we still have to discuss.
Oh, we don't have to discuss. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you wanted to discuss it at the end.
Have a presentation.
Yeah, I just want to switch it over to discussion instead of a motion.
I just thought we'd do the others and get discussion at the end. Okay, then.
How do you want to roll this?
Yeah, because it's listed as a motion on the agenda, I think we could do a motion in a second without, there can be just discussion on the item and no vote has to be taken tonight.
Okay.
If you want to do it that way.
Either way.
Then we can move it to the next meeting, continue it, postpone it to the next meeting.
So we still put the motion on the table?
We can discuss it, and then someone can move to postpone it to the next meeting.
Understood.
Do you want to read the issue?
I withdraw. And I will move to approve an ordinance of the Village of East Dundee, Cook and King County, Illinois, adopting a comprehensive plan, just so we're all clear.
Second.
Okay.
All right, now you can discuss.
Discussion.
So much discussion. So we do have a presentation tonight?
Yeah.
Wondering, yes. So we'll ask our consultants to come up and share with us all of the good work that has been done so far.
Good evening. My name is Mim Evans. I'm with Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies, and I met many of you at a workshop way back when, when we were first starting on this many months ago. Since then, we have enjoyed spending many months working with your community, a devoted group of volunteers who formed a task force. And we're pleased to be at this point where we can share a plan with you, answer questions, and see if there are revisions that you would like to have made. I'm going to take you through the first part, through the policy framework, and then Todd Manadalk from EGRET Knox will take you home through the future land use maps and next steps. So let's get started. Our goal tonight is just to hit the highlights and then answer questions. So we won't go into great detail. As you mentioned, it's, it's a long document that you can peruse and ask specific questions and pass them through Franco along the way also. We may be able to take care of some things that way. So the first question that you may ask is, why are you doing this? You all made the decision to do it back when, but just to refresh your, your memory, the, the plan that you had in place was quite old. And when I think back to 2010, it seems like a lifetime ago. So much has happened since then, so certainly warranted from that standpoint. This was valuable to the community, both in terms of the end product and also the process of allowing the residents and business owners to participate and to express their views and to come together in a number of different ways. So I think there was a lot of value just in going through the process that, that was gained. The plan is designed to guide all of you and guide the plan commission as you deliberate land use-related decisions going forward. And then finally, of course, it will lay the groundwork for your zoning code and for whatever updates need to be done there. So this is the process that we went through. We began with an inventory and data collection. Your staff was very helpful in helping us gather all the information we needed. Then community input, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail in the next slide. So I'm going to just go past that one right now. We then had four sessions with the task force, four hour-and-a-half-long meetings that sometimes ran over, where they really worked hard from start to finish in deciding things like draft vision, goals, objectives, and reviewing the future land use map. Then we were in the document preparation phase, which we're much of the way through, but still involved in that as we conduct revisions. And finally, the final review and adaptation, adoption. Now let's talk about the community input for a minute, because there was quite a bit of community input along the way. First, that task force, back to them, they had a number of roles. They shared their expertise. They had different experiences in the community, different professions, lived in different kinds of housing. So sharing their expertise and what they have learned along the way was very helpful. They represented the cross-ecqent of residents. We had people of different incomes and different ages and different backgrounds, so that was very helpful. And then they developed the plan elements, the vision, the goals, objectives, and the future land use map. So as you look at those things, keep in mind that they're not tonalized ideas. They are your, your residents' ideas. We did do a survey. We had 272 completed responses, which was very good. And then we did a business survey also and had 44 responses there, which was excellent to have that higher rate of return. The website was highly visited. As you can see, over 1,600 folks went to that website and a number of them left comments. It served more as a, as a clearinghouse for information than it turned out to be for comments, but that is very valuable. And then the, working with the city, the village with social media and your own website. And then we had an open house a few weeks back that was well-attended. Good turnout there. So let's talk about the policy framework. And the framework is what is the underpinnings of that map that we're going to get to and where a lot of the interest really lies, the vision, the goals, and objectives. I'm not going to read it all to you, you can read it. But the vision statement that was developed by the task force really hits on a lot of what is wonderful about East Dundee. And, and a vision is aspirational, but so much of this you already have. The value of your neighbors, thinking about not only the folks that live here, but also wanting to attract visitors, supporting your business community, and maximizing the benefit of all your natural resources that you have here, the river and forest preserve and that sort of thing. So those are all there and contained in that vision. Then we move into the goals, objectives, and strategies. And you can see here, just this little diagram of how we progress. The goals are really nine elements that directly go to achieving that vision. The objectives are specific steps towards achieving each goal. And then the strategies, you could think of as actual projects that you might assign to a committee or whatever to start to make things happen. As I mentioned, there are nine. I'm not going to go through and read them all. But I did want to point out, use this slide as an example of what you'll see in the plan. Each goal is at the top of one of these columns. And then underneath that, there's the goal statement, and then there's a list of objectives. The objectives vary in the number for each goal, but generally, there are multiple objectives for everything. You can see that then they are prioritized. We asked the task force to prioritize the objectives, and they did that by thinking about how feasible is it? In terms of, do we have, is it too expensive? Do we have staff and expertise? Is there a site for such a thing? Those kinds of feasibility questions. They, they thought about how much impact achieving that particular objective would have on the community. Some things have just a little bit of impact, and something else might really make a difference. So perhaps that would get a higher priority. And finally, how much community support is there for it? Something can be very doable and have a huge impact, but nobody wants to see that impact. So then that might be lower. So those are the questions that we asked them to think about as they went through this. And you can take a look at those at your own time and see how you feel about that. So there you can see just more goals and objectives. That gets us through the nine categories. So what I'm going to do now is I just want to skip ahead to the last, to this slide here, because I feel like it goes better with what we were just talking about here. In your plan, in the last chapter, there is an implementation matrix. This is a little excerpt from it. And I wanted to just walk through the way this works, because what this is, is a guide for how to make this all happen. So you've got your goal over there. These are the same goals we just talked about, your objectives, your priorities. And then we've added two more columns here, strategies, which we like to think of as first steps, or maybe more than the first step, but certainly the first step. So these are projects that you could get into that would be a way for you to develop a work program to get towards some of these objectives. And then in the last column, we have resources. And that's some, those are a variety of things. There are, in some cases, funding sources. In some cases, they're examples from other communities that you could look into to get some ideas. In some cases, they're suggested partners. So there's a whole number of different things that you'll find there in resources. When you get your final document, all of these will be links. And they'll, we'll make sure they're all working so that it'll be very easy if you want to see, oh, what do they do over in there at that town, to just go there and find it. And with that, I'm going to flip back to the beginning of the maps. And let Todd take over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for having us again. Again, my name is Todd Manadalk. I'm an urban planning consultant, working with NIU on this process. Really happy to see you all again. We've met with you before and also with your Plan Commission and Historic Commission as well over the past several months to get to this process. So I'm going to walk you through the future land use plan, and then we can definitely answer questions along the way. But what you see here is the preferred future land use plan. We actually went through different iterations of this plan. I'm actually going to show it to you real quickly. So when working with that task force, that was made up of residents and different community members, we went through different scenarios that you see here about what land, future land use could look like in your community. Again, these are just three options. There's probably, there's definitely countless options that you could really consider. But we wanted to look at it three different ways. The far left, the scenario A, was very low growth. Well, what happened if you didn't do any growth at all? Like no, no new development, the only thing you really redeveloped was any vacant lots. Like, for example, if you live in a neighborhood and there's a vacant lot next to you, just build a house there. What would happen there? And very low growth, you'd add about 200 residents, and your population would grow about six, about six and a half percent. The middle one is moderate growth. So what would happen if you started adding a little bit more residential growth, more commercial growth in certain areas? This was adding, roughly almost doubling your population. Definitely more aggressive, and probably some people on the task force thought said this was actually really aggressive. And then when you look at scenario C, it was high growth, very highly aggressive growth. So when we looked at all three of these, most of the time, when we do this exercise with communities, they're always like somewhere in between A and B, or in between B and C. But the task force for your community really leaned towards somewhere between A and B, closer to A, but they definitely didn't see no growth being an option, because there's going to be some growth of some sort. But where would you put that growth, especially residential? So if we're going back to the main map, this is the preferred option that, that we worked with, with the task force. And for the most part, your future land use plan looks pretty much similar to what you have today, your existing land use plan. The main difference, I wish, oh, I do have a pointer. So if you can see the little arrow that I'm using with the mouse, the main area that really shows any potential growth for residential is south of Route 72 Higgins Road on the east side of Route 25. And that would add about little over 1,200 new residents, which would be about a population worth about 40% more of what you have today. But to keep in mind, one thing about all this is that this was just an estimate. And right now, it may take several years, several decades, or even, it may not even come to pass that this will even develop at all. When, when it comes to development, you always need a willing buyer for properties. So whoever owns these properties, you would approach them and say, hey, we have this land use plan. Or a developer could say, hey, I want to purchase your property to develop this scenario. And it's up to that property owner to say, yes, I'm in, I really like that process. Or no, I don't want to sell my property for that. So it all depends. There's a lot of variables that go into figuring out how this will develop, or if it will develop at all, at what rate, and so on. But this, again, is just one option of many. One thing I do want to point out is that the Hager property is shown here. At the time that we produced this future land use plan, that was actually at the same time when the process for that started to gain traction as well. So we didn't figure, account for that. But we do say that that is mostly mixed-use development. So it could be either all residential, or it could be a mix between residential and commercial development. It could be any kind of scenario. The applications that you got for that property kind of reflect that as well. So wanted to point that out. But again, this is your, the preferred land use plan. We can definitely talk about, this is a really good time for you as community officials to let us know if you prefer this option, you want to scale it back, or scale it up, and so on. So wanted to throw that out there. Again, these are the scenarios, different scenarios that we went through with the task force to land on that preferred scenario. And then the last few slides was mainly just pulling out, showing you all the different, all the different land use types kind of isolated by themselves, just to show you how unique actually your community is. This shows all the residential areas. Yellow is kind of your, your estate residential at the far north part of your community. The dark yellow is your standard single-family. And the dark brown is multifamily, like your two senior living facilities, apartments, and so on. Commercial development is mainly your downtown and your quarters, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask, I see that these are future land use. Do you have anything that looks like this that is current land use for these same?
Actually, if you just look at this right now, this is basically your existing land use upset that trapezoid south of, yeah, correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Commercial is mainly along your main corridors around Route 72, Illinois Route 25 and downtown. That's pretty typical of where commercial development tends to go. Don't have too much office, most of it's along Illinois Route 72. You have a little bit at the three-way intersection that leads into downtown, but none of that, we didn't really add any new office in the scenarios. And then industrial is a big chunk of your community, but all of it is east of Illinois Route 25. It's not scattered as you see in a lot of communities. So in a way, a lot of that, those, all that industrial infrastructure is all concentrated in one space. So that was just to, we often don't do that exercise with many communities, but it actually is very unique. It just shows the unique values of your land use mix. So we wanted to show that, just to show those differences. And I think that's it. But I can go, I'll go back to the main land use map if there are any questions.
On the population growth projections, what were the selling points to those residents that were like, yeah, we should grow it a little bit? Is it like to lower the water bill because there'd be more users on it? What's a pitch for growing if somebody says, why don't we stay the same?
Part of it was the recognition that the senior, the population of senior level residents, not only in East Dundee, but in the region is growing as baby boomers continue to grow and as my generation, I'm a Gen Xer, as we get older, we're going to need senior living. But a lot of times you see here that there's a lot of waiting lists for those places. It takes a lot of time for people to move into those spaces. So we actually had a lot, we actually, Franco and I actually went to present this land use plan to your two senior living facilities about two weeks ago, just to show them like what the process was like and they, they really liked the plan. They think that there is need for more options. So again, that area where we thought if there was going to be any new residential development in your community, where would it be? This light brown or this brown color is potential, could be apartments, could be senior living, could be a whole mix of things. Again, this is just one iteration of many that could occur in your community. But yeah, I think one of the main things was providing more options, not only for seniors, but also just if someone was living in a, in a single family home and their kids grow up and they want to downsize, where could they go? So they thought, and they didn't want to leave town, where could they go? So they thought if there was any new development, there, you're a landlocked community too. So it's, you're not like in Elburn out in Kane County or you have room to grow. You don't really have much room to grow at all because of all the communities around you. You have your forest preserve in Cook County and the Magaw for nature preserve in the southern area. So there's not really much room to really add new development, but if you did, talking to the task force, they really thought this area made the most sense. But again, it, it could take a while for this to even occur the way it looks on the screen, so.
So it wasn't a, well, one question related is we have all the different residential areas where it'll be a single family or multi or the two colors, but are there ways to, I think of when we have RFPs going out and we're saying this is what we want for this area, ways to define in this plan, what is the ideal residential unit that would go into our downtown versus just outside the downtown in single family home areas versus out further? Like it'd be nice to have some of those details of maybe it's the high-end luxury ones would be downtown because they'd have more money to spend in the downtown and they might not mind the loud atmosphere because maybe it's all studio size and one bedroom. And then what's the height rule? Like do we say it's only two stories higher than the thing next to it or one story or? Some of those details I think would be really helpful to say, is this RFP going to be appropriate for this neighborhood and is this one okay for that neighborhood? There were some good visuals of like where you showed a lot of residential, single family homes and then ways to kind of blend visually into that versus we get a lot of pushback after we have an RFP come out and then we get options that don't quite align with our plan because we didn't have one, but we're just really hoping that this plan works in a lot of those details so that we can kind of hash it out with the community first before we start a big project like the lumberyard RFP that we're about to start as well. So are there, does it make sense in this to work in a lot of those details or is that more strategic plan focus that would come later?
That's actually where, so once this plan becomes adopted, usually typically the next step is you're going to amend your zoning code so that your zoning map and any of the codes, regulations that go in that align with what the plan strategies are. And that's where your zoning code will talk about densities, heights, lot widths and all that. And then if there's anything that you want to change, that's the time where you would amend your zoning code to match any strategy or anything that you wish to change. But for something like this property, right now it's not in your community. So if this were to become annexed into your community, you could either give it R1 zoning or whatever the developer wants to do. Most likely it'll probably be a PUD or a planned development, similar to what Hager will be so that you, you as village officials, your plan commission will have greater say in terms of what it would look like, how high it could be, how many units and so on. That's kind of the beauty of a planned unit development where you have, it does have that flexibility, but it gives you more purview over what you like and dislike about the proposal for whether it's this property, the Hager property or, or any property. It could be even a commercial development that comes in as a PUD because of some, maybe there's something about it that just requires more purview.
Is that property even feasible in the next couple of decades for build out? I mean, it's a quarry.
Oh, one parcel of it is, but yeah, that's easternmost.
Okay.
But yeah, the rest of that, I would, I would wonder if in the, the plan to that parcel there, would there have been any mention of with added potential for residential use? Also think along the lines of needed commercial use.
For sure.
So I mean, that's a fairly big parcel of land right there on the south of 72. If you were to put what that parcel could accommodate in residential, you probably would want to along 72 account for or at least allow for.
For sure.
Commercial use. So I'm just wondering if.
And also to insulate the residential.
Yeah, absolutely, from 72, exactly. So you know, would the comp plan have mentioned? I mean, you're, you're allowing for residential, which is great, but if it were to come to pass that that were used for that, we also want to.
Yeah.
Make sure that we allow for commercial. I'm not talking about for us here, but I'm talking about three or four boards from now.
Yeah.
You know, 20 years or 15 years from now.
Yeah, whether or not, if we show this as residential, all residential even up, up to Route 72 or we make a sliver of along 72 commercial and that's your land use plan, whatever it comes out to be. Again, if this were to become annexed, it would probably become PUD and at that point, even if it, even if your land use plan shows it as residential, the PUD allows you to consider, oh, they want to add a park, they want to add some commercial, they want to add some office space, something like that. That's where that flexibility comes in. So even if your land use plan right now shows what's shown here, it provides that flexibility to amend it.
Yeah, I mean, 15 years, 20 years down the road, the board at the time decides that they want to develop it or the owner wants to develop it. I mean, I'm sure it wouldn't, you know, you know, be a light bulb moment for the board at the time to think, hey, maybe we want to consider commercial use for this property along 72, but if it's here, at least it's out, you know.
For sure. Good question.
Can I ask a question? Along those lines, I guess my question is, we passed this, what legal binding is there involved in this? Are we binding boards, you know, 20 years from now to use this exact zoning with, or you know, or they have to amend the comprehensive plan? Or is this simply a guide that in the future, any board can really rezone any property to what they see fit at that time regardless of this actual plan?
Really good question. So your land use plan is actually more a guidance than your zoning map is actually morally, is more legally binding. So that's why one of the first steps after you adopt your comprehensive plan and your future land use plan is to amend or to, to amend or revise your zoning code and your zoning map so that they align. But once you start amending, if you start amending your zoning map, that's where you keep in mind that that's the legally binding map so that if a developer were to pick up your zoning map and this future land use plan, they could follow this future land use plans and to the T and say like, all this is going to be single family homes. But the zoning, well, right now the zoning won't be anything because it's in the county right now. But if you were to annex it in, then that's, that's the process where you would have to consider what would the zoning be? Usually when you annex something in, it's usually bring it in at the lowest zoning, zoning district, which is probably R1. But at the, at that time when a developer proposes something, that's where you consider what would the zoning be? Could, it could be multiple zoning districts too, or it could be one PUD with an underlying seat residential zoning district or a commercial zoning district, depending on what ultimately you all decide as a, your plan commission decides and they recommend to you as your village officials, this is what we recommend and you can take the recommendation, you could amend it in any way you possible. You have people in the public who'll have a say as well, so. But this future land use plan, answering your, your main question, is not legally binding. It's just a guide so that, but if you didn't have this land use plan and the developer came to town, they say, what does the village think this property should be, but you didn't have a land use plan at all, then they're kind of have free rein. They could say like, well, I want to do, have whatever they want to propose, but when they have a land use plan in hand, they can say like, oh, they, they envision this having some residential. They might say like, I like residential, but I, again, kind of going what your mayor was saying, that you could have commercial along Route 72. That's up to them. They propose it to you and then you can figure out what, if you support that or not, so.
Because future boards can still amend the zoning based on the zoning map, so.
Sure.
Again, just aspirational, a guide.
Yeah.
It helps to be a large development projects like this gentleman said because, you know, especially if it's a project in a tip area, it's just extra justification for what the village's broader plan is.
Okay.
And it will help for. But nothing changes till something changes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing that came up, a couple of you mentioned, while we're looking at 20 years with this plan, it's generally recommended that you update your plan every five years because things, things change. Five may be ambitious, but in any event, the timeframe is not necessarily the same as the lifespan of the plan. So while you're developing this plan, you want to have that long range view, but the lifespan of any particular plan is usually much shorter so that as things change, you don't tie, you know, three boards from now to necessarily the same.
I don't think anybody's land use plan dealt with COVID and all of the changes that came with that, so lots of adjustments to make.
Would we want to use the comp plan as a, an option or an opportunity to document any issues that we know exist for a particular piece of property? So for instance, to what Tricia mentioned, a future board has no problem changing zoning, for instance, we can go ahead and do that regardless of ordinance, we can do it, or the board in the future can do it. But the comp plan will also allow us, I think, to document any problems or issues that we know exist today. Yeah, you know, the thinking today might not come up 20 years from now. And so whatever we fear or want to make known, we can do with it, with the comp plan for certain.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you can make any notes you want on any property and saying for reasonings why something was shown the way it was or wasn't shown the way it was. For example, one of the scenarios, you can see here in the resident, in the, this is all currently industrial, one of, two of the options showed what would happen if that kind of gravel pit were to get filled in? Could you build on top of it and put residential? But there's a lot of issues with that. I mean, one is the property owners, it's still being used for industrial. Two, it's oftentimes it can be really expensive to build on top of an industrial site because of environmental cleanup. So we basically nixed that idea and that's how we landed on this. So again, we don't really say that, like explicitly saying that's why we're not proposing any residential there. But that was the reasoning why we didn't touch this for any residential development, just because it is still viable and it also just has the, the different kind of limitations as to residential development on that site.
They've been reclaiming that for what, last 30 years now, easy 35. But I would think there'd be subsidence issues with it as well after it is fully reclaimed.
Sure.
But that's the last place I'd want to build a house without knowing for sure, I'm not going to sink.
Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, there are minor mental studies might even tell you, you can't build anything on this at all.
It's possible.
If there are specific properties that this land, this future land use doesn't account for necessarily what it's being used as now, should we flag those? Or current, like their current zoning is not quite right? Like there are random pieces of property throughout town. I think we all know at least two or three that are not quite right with their zoning. It's like, it's residential, but it's technically zoned, commercial or something like that. So do.
We don't really account for that because those are referred to as legally non-conforming uses and the only way that.
Should we fix that though?
You can fix that in the zoning process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a list.
But oftentimes those properties can exist as legally non-conforming uses until, usually it's 50% or more, like if a fire were to destroy 50% or more of the property.
Or discontinued use.
Yeah. Discontinued use for a certain amount of time, so.
I mean, to be honest, the couple that I'm thinking of are, are ones that are built residential, they're used residential, but like they're little bitty plots are zoned weirdly as commercial or something like that. So fixing it, like they appear on this as residential, so hey, fix, done, bye.
Kelly, does a municipality have to acknowledge a piece of property is legally non-conforming?
I don't.
And if they didn't, can the owner of it claim that it is?
Well, you can't, you can change the zoning, but they can continue the use as, as it has existed until either it's discontinued. I think your code says like six months or if they were to do like a major remodel, then that could be considered.
All bets are off.
Yes. They have to conform then to the zone.
Is there, is there any leeway or differentiation amongst the, the percentage of change to an existing?
I think the East Dundee code does call for what a major, I'll call it a major remodel would look like, it's spelled out in your code. Chris could probably detail, Chris or Mary could probably detail it out a little bit better than I could.
Or hope the code could.
Yeah, the code does. It's one of those two things. It's either, you know, like you said, if you were to take like the back section off of the property and try to extend it, that could change, you know, you could then now have to conform or you stopped using the property for six months and now we're in, you know, the village can say, we're going to make you conform with the current zoning code.
Good question. All communities have them, so.
Yeah, I don't care for it myself. As you.
You don't care for legal non-conform?
Yes, not at all. Not a fan.
So a question about the, the chart was really interesting with all the income levels in East Dundee overlaid with the Kane County's income levels. Are there targets that we should have in this to say, you know, we have this many at the high end, low, medium, like that we need more of these, but less of those? Cause we do, it does seem like we are at double what the county has as far as at the lower end of having 20% instead of 10% is the average for the 0 to 25,000 a year and much lower at the higher end. Are there, does that just get informed by these interviews of people of, well, what people are asking for in these meetings is more of the lower end? So are there any standards that we could have to say, seeing these five different income brackets, we need more of these or more of those? Instead of like affordable housing is important to have in certain spots in town, but every time a property comes up to know the goal for this property is, you know, downtown, maybe it's more higher end in this neighborhood, maybe it's, that's where we take this opportunity. But having some sort of guidance as an overall plan to say, this neighborhood, since it's like this, we would target these, on this other neighborhood, we would target those. Is that part of something that could be worked in? Is that part of something that could be worked in?
Uh, that's something that.
I was going to say that, that's the sort of thing that is supported by your goals and objectives. Those, you know, you have, you have goals and objectives in there. Say things about providing housing and all income levels of meeting the needs of a diverse group of residents. Those kinds of objectives give you the foundation that you need to say the plan supports the diversity of residents. And then you're planning for, how would you get those that diversity of residents? And then you move into things usually like housing and say you have, so whatever, whatever kind of housing proposal you have or you'd like to encourage, as long as you don't appear to be moving away from a diverse housing situation, your plan will support you. So that's where, it may not appear on the map because it's, you know, a single family is going to, if you're a single family, it's not going to say this is a single family that's expensive and this is a single family that's affordable. But your, your goals and objectives will give you cover to put certain areas to accommodate certain.
But if a village has a fair representation of each income level currently, then we would more or less be bound by the developer or their appetite for putting in a certain level of, of housing, if you will, the price wise. But we're not bound by any of it.
The plan doesn't, doesn't bind you.
No.
In any way.
The plan doesn't bind us anyway.
No.
Right, right, it's a guide.
Right.
Right, but the, the objectives to give you the cover, you know, I think to go in the dressing room.
Then a different question, oh. Just the 72 corridor coming down the hill. I don't remember seeing what types of businesses we want to target for that area. Kind of the gateways you drive down into town on 72. And maybe I forgot, but do you know, it seemed like some areas had goals for what types of businesses we want to put in this area versus that area, like auto manufacturers and sales out on 25. And I know in the past we've had like medical leasing company wanted to sell to a used car lot and we thought that's not probably what we'll have in this plan. It's like the gateway as you come in. But are there some recommendations? I remember seeing all the chapters of the different kinds of things that people want, but does this target for this neighborhood, we want to put some of these in? Or is that more when we get to the strategy that we would start picking from that menu and put them like stickers on the map?
That would be, again, that would be more your zoning code, which would say like, in a B1 district, these are the uses that are permitted. These are the uses that are, we view as special uses where we want a little bit more purview to discuss if it's appropriate or not. I mean, we do, I don't have a, a slide for this, but there is a, one or two pages that talk about, these are the different types of commercial uses that would be appropriate for East Dundee. But we didn't say like, it would be appropriate at this intersection around this corridor. That's where the zoning code would come into play. And that's why it usually is, again, the most important thing that you do almost the first step after you adopt this is to update your zoning code, so.
And is that a process that you guys are involved in? Or do you give direction on how we meet with planning and zoning and discuss? Or we give it to planning zoning to make recommendations? Or how does that process usually look?
Uh, I mean, if you're, Franco and Caleb want to do it in-house, they can certainly do so. Oftentimes they work with a planning consultant. It doesn't have to be me, but there's plenty of other planning consultants in the region who do stuff like this. But again, that's totally separate from this process. But it is a very important process, just because I think zoning codes were, I'm not sure how your zoning code is and they get updated frequently, that sometimes there's uses that were okay 20 years ago and aren't okay today or not even around today. And there's new uses that weren't around 20 years ago, but might be acceptable today, like coworking spaces, we didn't even know what those were 15 years, 10, 15 years ago. But they're more acceptable now. Where would that be appropriate in a community like East Dundee? Stuff like that, so a good question. I think there is always kind of a, a mix up between what is, what does land use, what is your comprehensive plan and land use plan cover? And what is your zoning code and zoning map cover? So these questions are really good to kind of talk about now, so appreciate it.
Maybe this doesn't 100% apply to this, but I was very surprised by that chart that says that 20% of our residents are living on $25,000 a year or less. It's the highest percentage bracket. Do we account that to senior citizens?
Yeah, that's, there are some anomalies in your demographic data and many of them can be traced in the fact that you have a higher percentage of seniors than.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? No comments? Thank you.
Great, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to postpone. I will make a motion to postpone the approval to.
Adoption.
Adoption, thank you, adoption to the April, what's the April meeting? 21st, April 21st meeting.
Second. Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Kunzi.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item B then, if we could have a motion.
Make a motion to approve a resolution waiving bidding requirements and approving an agreement with Chadwick Contracting in the amount of $80,819.92 for concrete and asphalt construction services to create ADA parking spaces and additional crosswalks near 102 North River Street and 104 to 106 North River Street.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? Well.
We do have a brief slideshow for this, if you want to.
Presentation. Can we leave the lights on because I'm getting sleepy?
For you, Sarah.
Thank you, just for me.
So as you know, as part of the parking garage project, we've been looking at various elements of the infrastructure surrounding it. And as part of this evaluation, we've removed some utility poles to allow for access. We've also had to evaluate the ADA parking spaces and the crosswalks in the area. So the board did discuss adding four-way stops at two of these intersections, which have already been implemented. But the crosswalks that accompany the both those have not yet been installed. I mean, you can cross at it, it's a four-way stop, but the actual pavement markings and things and the additional curb cuts and things are not there. So that's part of this contract, but at this point I'll pass it off to Franco.
Yeah, so as part of the no cost change order with McHugh, where they are adding the additional ADA spot on River Street at Hill, which will be to the left here. Staff was also reeval, took this as an opportunity to reevaluate the remaining parking spaces on River Street. And when we did that, we noticed that the parking spaces in front of River Street Tavern, the two ADA spaces are out of compliance. And we thought this would be a good opportunity to work with McHugh's contractor, which is Chadwick Contracting, to get that person's rates while they're here doing this work to also reconstruct the parking spaces in front of Main Street Dental, the Jiu-Jitsu Place and River Street Tavern. Make the parking stalls slightly more deeper than their existing shallowness. Why, reduce the space of the parking island to the right to fit three standard spaces and move the ADA space in front of Main Street, Main Street Dental. Additionally, the whole sidewalk was out of compliance with the grade for the cross slope for a ADA code requirement. So the whole section from McHugh's project all the way down south to Jackson Street would have to be involved in the project, except for this four-foot square section here, which is still good. That doesn't need to be touched in front of River Street Tavern. So what's going to happen is if the board approves this resolution, from Jackson Street to Hill Street, there are 15 standard spaces and two out of compliant ADA spaces. With the upgrade, with the approval of this resolution, this whole area will be upgraded to 16 standard spaces and three standard spaces here, shifting the ADA spaces north. You gain the extra space by the parking island being narrowed and this curb being extended to, toward Jackson. It doesn't need to bump out anymore for the access aisle for the ADA spots.
We're going to keep the peninsula?
It's, it, this one kind of has to because then this price would be outrageous because there's a light pole there and it would have to all be relocated. So that was one of the challenges.
Well, if we're going to add depth to the parking spaces, are we going to encroach on the road?
I don't believe so.
No, the, the additional.
Right here, pushback.
So.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, we're talking about grade on that sidewalk. Are we referring to that like big drop off off the sidewalk onto those parts? How do we fix that? I'm curious. Are we going to level, are we going to raise up the parking spots to meet it? Okay.
Yeah, and this double curb goes away as well. That's there.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
I have a lot of people over at Gardner Place who are very excited about this proposal so they can get into their dentists.
I, I did speak with Dr. Patel and Lauren from River Street Tavern and I've been keeping everyone in the loop. They know this is before you tonight, so Dr. Patel is super excited for this.
Desai.
I'm sorry, Dr. Desai is super, super excited for this. And Lauren was on board that it's basically not going to impact him because his, his people could still enter off of this remaining sidewalk. We are going to try to schedule, if the board approves it, this work to be done on Friday because Dr. Desai, Main Street Dental is closed on Fridays. And this side to be done on a Monday because River Street Tavern is closed on Mondays. So there's minimal interference with their business.
I really appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Yeah, well, I've been working with them through the whole parking garage status. So they knew that a lot of projects were coming, so I kind of know their business by now.
Yes, soon.
I have a concern, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, just that you're moving the ADA spots further from Bandito's. So are, are there going to be some put on the paved lot so that there's something closer? Because that is something that was brought up by Roger, the owner. And I do, that does make sense, they're being moved quite a bit further from this business.
The board, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought we had ADA spots planned for that surface, part of that surface lot on.
The, no, yeah, on Jackson.
The surface lot, yeah.
Yeah.
The way the, the surface drainage is, it's such a steep slope. It, it actually changes in grade by six feet from one end to the other. They couldn't put the ADA spots there.
So on this plan, we're going from two ADA spots in this section to one, is that correct?
In the center, but to the, to the north, there's another ADA spot right next to Hill Street.
Okay, oh, that's right, yeah.
I like that for the record, I was just thinking.
And Village Engineer Heinz worked with McHugh's engineers on this to make this a little bit more deep. So in case you have a ADA van or something, it's not bumped out into the Hill Street intersection here. So that was an extra added value to that.
I struggle with the idea of a no bid contract on this. And this is, this is not new to us. I mean, we knew these changes were going to have to come about. So we're last minute in this whole process and I, I, I've struggled with. I mean, $80,000 is a lot of money. We don't know that there isn't a company out there that couldn't do it or wouldn't do it for 50. So, I mean, the fact that this, we knew this was coming about, it just seems as though that we could have avoided, I think, the need for a no bid contract on this.
We weren't exactly aware that this was coming about. So when, when McHugh bid the project, they said they were going to put all of their ADA spaces in the garage itself. It wasn't until they were able to do the full engineering and actually do the surveying of the site that they realized that the, the way that the structure was going to be built, there wasn't going to be the ability to put all the ADA spaces in the garage without losing additional spaces. So we could have told them, no, don't do this. Put the additional ADA space in the garage. And they would have, but the price of that would have been that we would no longer have as many spaces in the garage as we'd want. So we, we understood the value was, it's better to have as many spaces as possible in the garage and then have them do this work out on the front. And while they're doing this work out on the front, they're tearing up this road anyways. So yes, we can tell them, tear this road up and put that spot in and then we'll go out to bid for the rest of the project. But this only came about like in the last, I don't know, two months? It wasn't something that we knew.
Early January.
When we signed the contract.
Yeah, so it, this is, what's before us today is the part that is.
Not in red, right here.
Not in red.
Right here.
If we're tearing this road up anyway, let's assess these spots and fix the non-compliant ADA spaces and.
It's not part of the original contract.
Right. Right.
But the notable mention from McHugh sparked this.
Yeah.
Also, Chadwick is also doing the utility here. They're adding the storm inlet and connecting to this storm over here and regrading. It's basically from here flows north, here flows south to the existing stormwater inlet. And in addition to these curb cut and new curb pores, there's also three intersection improvements that Phil is working on with Chadwick as part of this contract for adding crosswalks. What you see here in front of you is this right here would be the parking garage. We're going to add one connectivity to the, to the bike path and Hill Street right here.
So. Are we going to do brick with a cement apron on either side of the crosswalk? Because again, I would think that we might want to do stamped rather than actual brick. I mean, we can see that the other crosswalks in the downtown are pretty chewed up. And that mostly, I think, is due to truck traffic. You know, just in the interest of life expectancy, it seems as though if we could stamp this to match the others, we'd get more out of it.
I'll, I'll defer to Phil, that's his area here.
We, it would add a significant cost for those, all three of those intersections. So we're going to, we're proposing to stripe those for now. Oh, okay. And then as we get into more of a resurfacing or reconstruction program for River Street itself, we'll look at brick pavement, crosswalks or stamped concrete or something. But this proposes striped, thermoplastic striping only for those three crosswalks.
And then, oh, is it going to be reflective? The striping?
Thermoplastic?
Yeah.
Yes, essentially.
It would seem, I mean, if we got the, the deck right there, it might be worthwhile. Yep. Yeah, and the final slide is just the one in front of Bandito Barney's to the south of the project site.
Across Jackson?
Across River. Oh, 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 okay. Gotcha, I understand.
So Tricia brought up Bandito's losing ADA spots, getting pushed away from them. I feel like we didn't talk about that though.
Yeah, um, we could, we could, go ahead.
There's still a number of ADA spots in the main public parking lot across from Bandito Barney's, next to the Dairy Queen, which would be some of the closer ones. But we can evaluate the spaces around Bandito specifically to see if there's an opportunity to add an additional one near that business.
Maybe like a street, yeah.
I'm happy with the idea of evaluating and seeing what, what can work.
I don't, that's why I was just, I was going to say that and then I thought, maybe you can't. Yeah, you can, if you can.
What was the question?
Parallel, parallel spots.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. So we'll put it on our to-do list.
Thank you.
I mean, I guess this is better than the two non-compliant ones.
Oh, yeah, I know, I say this is great.
So you mentioned doing this on a Monday and whatever other day. Are we saying that each one is going to take one day to complete? Or are we saying this is going to be consecutive Mondays?
No. Well, should the board approve this tonight? Tomorrow I'm going to get in touch with Chadwick to figure out a plan with the business owners of what works best for them. Chadwick said this should be about an eight to nine day project. And there is options where if they're pouring in front of Dr. Desai's office, the concrete they could use that Engineer Heinz recommended would be a one overnight cure where should say Saturday, because we poured that on Friday, he's closed. Saturday morning, he has an emergency operation that he has to get through. He'll be able to walk over it should he need to. But in all, eight to nine days for the project in total.
So two months then, because we're going to do eight Mondays? Or what does that mean exactly? If we're only doing this on Mondays and it takes eight Mondays, is that maybe what's got?
Oh, no, sorry, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I phrased it wrong. It should only take about a week and a half, this whole project.
Okay, so they're not just going to work on.
Okay, so they're not just going to work on Monday?
Correct, correct. They're the most invasive will be the days they're closed, so it doesn't bother them.
The concrete pour in front of the building where they can't get into it.
Sorry.
Okay, any further questions, comments?
Thank you.
Nope, Franco.
Trusty Soder?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Kuntz?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
And this is waving bidding, so I'd have to call President Lyman.
Yes. Okay, so that'll take us to item C then, which is just a direction and discussion regarding a request for a proposal for the property located at 110 Railroad Street. This is the 110 Railroad.
Lumberyard.
Okay. Thinking that's Dolores', I was thinking the gravel lot, okay. Would you like to open this up?
Sure, so as most everyone is aware, we acquired this property last year or the year before. I think it was December of 2023. And we are leasing the property back to the seller until July of this year. So at this point in time, we've made significant progress with the Performing Arts Center to know that it is moving forward. And so we've, I should say Caleb did the lion's share of the drafting of this RFP. And he, I think, hit most of the points, but if there's any that we missed, we'd like your feedback on them. But generally, we're looking for a mixed use development that will, you know, bring a space for the Performing Arts Center as well as some additional commercial space for the downtown. And we did make some modifications to it over the course of today to add that the green building should be preserved if possible. And of course, if not possible, we will work with the seller's family to make sure that that has the ability to be relocated if that's the way that it goes. But otherwise, we welcome your feedback and we will make any changes that you recommend and try to put it out this week.
Well, being cognizant of every one of the understandings that we've had with the previous owner, Dolores, my only comment to the board, since it's not likely that I will still be part of the board by the time this really gets underway, would be that our last presentation from the, the Rouse Center, which I am excited about, Mr. Caranda used the words municipal theater. Please be aware of what that means. The Village of East Dundee, I don't think wants to own a theater. The building goes up in the downtown, let's say, if we own it and the business fails, now we're stuck with it. The ownership of it, we're talking a twelve, maybe fifteen million dollar structure, who knows? If the money however comes from other means or areas, we then just need to deal with the building in the downtown, which is, is, you know, a, a big enough task. But at least financially, we're in better shape for it. So please consider that.
I did like this line in the notes that said the village would not own any of the property at the conclusion of this partnership. That was killer for me.
It was, but I'm just curious though as to what the appetite of the, the, the Rouse Center would be otherwise. And so just, we need to make sure that we understand that, so, but thank you.
I did have one question about this because I don't have a solid understanding of how things work. With this being TIF and with this being sold, is there an issue with people coming back to us perhaps without prevailing wage as part of the RFP? As part of their proposal?
There has to be prevailing wage.
There has to be prevailing wage?
Because it's in the TIF, we'll have to, if the property were to be sold, it'll have to be advertised like we do for all the other properties if the village is sold in the TIF.
I just wanted to be sure of that.
Thank you.
If it wasn't in a TIF, prevailing wage wouldn't be an issue? Is that correct?
No, if you're just straight up.
This is Illinois.
Yeah, if you're giving TIF funds, then yes, it has to be prevailing wage, yeah.
That's what I thought.
No matter what the project, we, we always comply with prevailing wage. And the three nephews have been here, I've never seen any situation where we wouldn't.
Yes, chat tractors do.
Yeah, I figured, I just wanted to be clear on that point. It was asked.
Maybe we could just talk about, I guess, expanding on what Jeff just said. Our hope for this property, my understanding, and maybe you could tell me where I'm wrong in this area. Our hope is that there will be a developer that will come up with a plan to develop this land with the theater on it, but also maybe mixed use residential, commercial. And that when they do this, they would be putting up the money to do it. And maybe they get an expectation that they have a thirty year lease built into it with the theater group. Or they have rent from these mixed use developments. And that is what would actually fund this, not the village. Is that not the case?
So the, the concept is that the village's contribution is the land. So when we sell this, because it's been identified that the goal is to have a performing arts venue, in order to facilitate a financially viable plan, the, the land is going to be sort of the village's contribution to the overall project. So we wouldn't be putting in any cash or any, anything. So the goal would be a private developer would come, propose a project that includes a performing arts center and they would fund the entirety of the project. They would lease the theater to the theater company who would, it would be leased to own. So for twenty years or twenty-five years, the theater company would pay rent to the developer. And at the end of that twenty or twenty-five years, the theater would own themselves outright. So they would have a separate PIN, a separate piece of the overall development that they would have the ability to be the owner of twenty to twenty-five years down the road. So, yeah, as we put in the RFP, the, the village is not wanting to own any of this. This is supposed to be a private market. But because there is a great need for performance venue space and there is a great desire to have this performing arts venue for the community and it would be a very substantial driver of downtown business traffic for all the restaurants and everybody else. There was, you know, a compelling interest in the village acquiring this property to see this development happen and to make that performing arts center viable. So this model will set them up for success so that they can have skin in the game and also allow them to have a financing mechanism that makes sense for us as well. So we're not sort of on the hook.
Is the RFP gonna stipulate the village's hope to have a theater put there? Or, I mean, cause if it does, you just have to consider.
It's in there.
Well, but I'm just saying that if we do, it may limit interest. Who knows? You know, I mean, unless it depends too on, on the, the Rouse Center's involvement in it, so.
Right.
Well, if, if, if we get no bids to build this theater, we would then, at that time, reissue an RFP that didn't include the theater maybe. But we want the theater, so we're gonna put it in this RFP regardless if it limits proposals. I mean, right now, we don't want a proposal without a theater, so.
I mean, the RFP has ton of different specifics of what would be included in, in the performing arts center. And I believe that's something that is the kind of information we've gotten from Rouse, is that?
Yeah, so we worked with the Rouse Center to put those requirements in the proposal. Also, very exciting, but we didn't talk about it because I put it on the consent agenda. But the village board approved earlier this evening the purchase of the gravel lot that is right across the street from this property. So we will be the owners of that gravel lot by the end of this month. And then we will rename the gravel lot the Grassy Lot. It will be an extension of the park. It will be community space in perpetuity. It is extremely exciting. And so this, this parcel that we're redeveloping, because Dolores was so great to work with us, to sell it to us, is going to be absolutely phenomenal. The downtown is so, has so much potential. And it's because this board and previous boards had the vision to start putting the pieces in place of what could be down the road. So we're, we're planting trees for people down the road to enjoy the shade of. And all of this takes a lot of time and a lot of coordination and a lot of effort. And, you know, it's, I hope that someday Dolores gets to cut the ribbon on the theater. And that will be amazing.
So also too, the development of, of the property is gonna be done in conjunction with the plans for Meyer Street to be extended south.
Exactly.
To River, or, um, sorry, to, oh.
Yes.
So are we gonna do that kinda at the same time or are we gonna try and do that before?
The idea would be to do it all at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, what else? Is this, is this RFP going to have those renderings that we had before of here's a potential performance theater with a residential unit and parking?
So we included those renderings as sort of things to give people ideas for, but we specifically stated that that's not the end-all-be-all. Like this is something for inspiration, but certainly people are gonna come up with really good ideas, I hope and expect. So we didn't wanna limit it to say, here's what it should be, but here's an idea to like get things started. But I, you know, that, those plans had some adaptive reuse of some of the existing buildings, which if, if somebody could pull that off, that would be amazing.
They, they're not currently.
It's, it's linked at the bottom.
It's like a link to the site. And if we do, cause we showed the, I think it was a twelve unit residential building that only had nine parking spots. Wonder if we could just put in like the demographics of an ideal person to live in, you know, a busy downtown and then also requirement for it, you need to have your own parking, like one per unit at least if it's like studios and one bedrooms and some visitor parking. Unless we wanna just count on, you know, it could be a dozen spots that are just always taken up by this. So if we just put that requirement in, it might prevent from having spillover parking issues from the residential. And that might cap how many they suggest.
That we're putting in southbound to extend Meyer to Railroad and going angled parking on each side, we might end up getting more spaces. There were a few more anyway, that would suffice.
Yeah, as long as there's a plan for them within their plan of enough dedicated parking.
So since that's a, if, if there was residential, that would be, I would imagine, a separate PIN would have separate, its own zoning. And would the zoning rules for a mixed, multi-family have requirements already for parking in it based on the units and the sizes of the units?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, maybe they don't need that.
Dolores, you had a comment or a question if you'd like to?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I wanna thank you for making me quit. It's a beautiful feeling, but I got a lot of work to do yet. But I don't think I would have ever quit. You have to kind of force me to quit. I know when you said it wasn't eminent domain, but it was a paper served on eminent domain and it was worked on, on eminent domain and it was charged as eminent domain.
No, I'd think they're, okay, go ahead.
I don't know. Eminent domain means we'll maintain the land. You don't take the buildings. And I have people coming and asking for the fence. I have people come and say, I want the lumberyard, lumber, I'll take it down. I don't know how to manage that transition. I don't want it to look like hangers where parts are missing. That's why I don't want the office to be parts missing. You will have to help me with that.
We will, I'll definitely work with you on that.
So I'm, I'm with you. It's a learning situation and my children aren't interested. I'm here by myself, both of my siblings.
And I, I don't think the village is either as far as the street value.
It's a learning situation and I think every village should be small. And the only thing I had was that this went on and on and on. Seven hundred dollars every month because it was a court case and it shouldn't have been because it ended up with the same first one we had in the very beginning. And it was because the Chicago lawyers got into it. And when you invite the Chicago lawyers on the East Dundee side and they insisted that Greg Capicassa and John Boncowski would have, have to have special head shirts and they would have to have a sign at least with me that they were gonna get out immediately. John's out today. I haven't booked that, but he's out today. But when John, when it finally got after three times, my lawyer said no, their lawyer said yes. My lawyer said no, their lawyer said yes. And then we thought we were all together. And then this last one came. Would you consider leaving? Don't come into your lumberyard. No, not with a fire. That's inviting the, the wolf with the horses and the box with the chicken poop. I couldn't even come into my place. I mean, that would be bad. And that's another thing. I don't want, I think I should leave everything as it is until you absolutely have a contract. But that will be afterwards. I don't want anybody else in the place but me. My address will always be 1110 River Street and I don't care where that big old box is. I said, I can't change it this late date. I'm too old.
We'll, we'll help you through it, Dolores. Absolutely.
As far as.
I'd love to work with you, whatever you want.
Of course.
You'll have to work with me because I don't know how to, I think I should leave the fence up. I think I should leave the lumberyard if they wanna use it and it's there. I mean, I'm, I'm not money hungry. So if they would use it and construct it, I would like to see the green office there. And that was kind of a promise, not a wishy-washy promise.
And apply.
We will put it in the contract that if they can, can do it, we'll put it in. If they can't do it, then I want my office somewhere. I don't know where.
Well, we'll, we'll definitely work with you on all those.
Okay.
Because then a lot of it, we really can't speak to, simply because we don't know what we're dealing with with regards to the RFPs or any developers who wanna come in and have vision for it. We don't know what that'll be, so it's gonna be an ongoing process.
I would like at this time to ask for, I don't, we talked about getting the garbage out of there. There's so much there, but you said just leave it, we'll take it. I don't wanna do that. I wanna clean it up. And I would like to clean this up. I don't hope it's gonna get there. There still will be garbage. I don't know what John would. But anyway, if we can get a, from Fluff Brothers, skip because what now? Greg Capicassa is using his garbage skip.
Okay.
And he's paying forty dollars every time they try to pick it up. And I don't think that's fair. We talked about, we're helping you, but I was supposed to pile it up. Then you were gonna get a lift truck and put it in the skip.
Well, right.
I don't think anybody's gonna ma- make you personally pile up garbage.
No, but I mean.
We will help you with it.
And our initial thought was.
Well, I don't want any garbage bakers to run all the ways along.
Initially too, we, we considered that you're taking out of the building whatever it was you wanted. The rest of it could just be part of the demo process. Now, if the building is gonna come down as part of your future thought, then that will bring back into the conversation what we do with the contents.
We'd like to ask for a skip.
We'll make it happen. No problem.
Yep. We'll pile it up and it will look terrible and a rat's.
Erica's, Erica's on it.
She's on it. She wrote it down. She wrote it down.
Life is too short to be serious, so have a fun.
Thanks, Dolores.
Thank you.
Was there any other comments or questions surrounding the RFP on this property? Okay, well then we've got, I assume consensus to move forward with issuing it?
Publishing it.
Yep. So, okay, great.
Where we do mention the historic district, we put some images. It seems like always the first pass is a miss, but it might be nice to put like pictures of what we did to the garage. They presented this and then we had to change it to look like historical or show the ones that we really like just so the first shot is a little closer.
We can do that. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Now, which we didn't then, have a historical guide for people thanks to. Now, which we didn't then, have a historical guide for people, thanks to our planning and zoning. I guess we're still past that, though?
Is that done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But...
We also talked about a ground-based plaque, uh, you know, explaining kinda like what we have on the southeast corner of the depot a lot, explaining the history behind the depot. And into that, we, we're talking about doing the same thing with the, with the lumberyard, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay, um, okay, that'll take us, anybody else? Questions, comments? No? That'll take us to reports. I will start. Just, uh, this weekend, we had our St. Patty's Day parade, and it was a really, really big success. I just can't overstate the, the appreciation that I have for everybody's work. Of course, Eileen's group, Trish, you were a big part of that, staff, of course. Phil, your guys just did yeoman's work on this one. They really, really went to town on it. And so, really appreciated that. And Chief, your guys too, as well. Everybody, uh, really came about. It was well-attended, well-behaved. I mean, the, even the, the weather held, so, um, a little breezy, but it was, uh, it was very well-attended. So, I thank everybody for that. And that was all I had. So, Sarah, why don't we start with you?
Um, I've, we've seen some feedback on the, I'm gonna take the Water Street project. That will be what I give my report on, um, for the parking and everything. Um, and so, I know that that's out kind of for bid, like, for proposals right now, right? To, for the plan for the parking along Water Street and what we do with that. Am I talking crazy?
No.
Okay.
The contract was approved to do the design for Water Street?
Correct.
For the parking?
For the park.
Oh.
Right, for the park.
Um, so, I think with some of the feedback we've been receiving, or at least I've been hearing, I'd like to maybe have a conversation with you about looking at different options as part of that contract. Just see if there's, if we can look at things besides making it one-way. If they're just, we'll see.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Keep in mind too, that the money that's going to go from the water line to where the park begins is gonna be borne by the county, so any changes that might end up affecting that overall cost of the run by them, so. Uh, anything else? Kathleen?
Um, was talking to one of the neighbors up on Rubine Road, um, near the school with the bus traffic and pickup traffic. Actually spoke to a couple of neighbors, and it's still bad. Um, it's, um, and at this point, it seems like the principal is just completely overwhelmed with everything else that they have to be doing to keep the students, um, learning.
I have an update on that.
You do?
I do.
Awesome.
Caleb and I are meeting with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent the first week of April. I think Phil's coming to that meeting as well. I can't remember.
Yeah.
And Josh.
Yes, great, awesome. Uh, Scott, um, the, the gentleman that was here that originally brought it to our attention and gave us the presentation, um, I know he'd love to hear back.
Okay.
That you guys are doing that. And then also, um, Tricia and I have spent some time with the local businesses on the events, to wind down Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, and Motor Mondays.
Apologies again for the flu.
Yeah, well, you can't have the flu. It's been going around. Um, so, there's been a series of meetings beyond just the committee meetings, simply with the businesses, trying to understand concerns. Um, and with the idea of having the, the tents serviced for the people that are not adjacent to, um, directly adjacent to the, the new square on Meyer and River. Um, and, um, I wanna thank you guys for finding the money and the energy and the resources to be able to support those, those businesses that are not directly on the square to have, um, tents put up, um, for them, um, based on the number of people, you know, people that are signing up for each event. Um, there were some issues I did not include in my email that this might solve some problems for the people that do put up tents, because in, if, if it's pre-planned out and it's put up by Public Works, there, sometimes there's not enough space based on two people putting up their, their tents and they're staking out their areas for another person. So, it, it's, I think, in the end, because it's gonna be more planned out, it'll be much more successful. So, thank you very much on that. And then, um, that's all I had. I'm gonna leave the rest to you, based on your other conversations.
Scott? Um, this, uh, this past week, I had the chance to hold a neighborhood meeting with, uh, well, we, we had it here, and we filled up every chair, uh, in this room. So, it was well-attended. I live in the Hager area, um, and so, it was, it was my, my, my Hager neighbors. And, uh, just wanted to say, the overwhelming consensus of the neighborhood was that the Brinshaw Plan, as it currently stands, had much too much density for the neighborhood. Neighbors also felt that the current plan's ratio of low-to-mid-market level incomes was not balanced, with eighty percent being below market value. They also echoed our concerns that the look did not match the historic neighborhood, and the increase in traffic seemed untenable. Additionally, there was a feeling of skepticism that any renegotiated deal will be acceptable. I'm glad that I was able to represent, uh, present the neighbors with the feelings here, because there was a handful of residents who felt, even after I reassured them of the opposite, that this was a done deal, and their voices would not be taken into account by the board. My experience with this board reassures me that this will not be the case. I was very encouraged by the amount of participation that we got, and that the overall tenor of the group was not skepticism, anger, or frustration, though those, though those, though those feelings were shared. But the overall tenor of the meeting was friendly and courteous. To my neighbors, I want you to know I am on your side, and I will continue to advocate for you. And, um, that's... Okay, I feel like I had another item to count on, so that is what I have to guess.
Thank you for having that meeting.
What's that?
Thank you for having that meeting.
Trish?
Um, I just want to second, thank you to Public Works and the police for helping us so much with the parade this Saturday. You know, we start months in advance with planning, so it's so nice to just see everyone come together and for it to be as successful. And thank you, snow. We have four-letter words. We don't like to use rain and snow or them. So, thankfully it held out for Sunday. And then also echoing what, um, Kathleen was saying about the meeting with the businesses. I had a separate meeting with a lot of the business owners, 'cause there was the, the idea of it was like an Osterson's Ban, like, two separate, like, groups of business owners that don't communicate as well. And so, I said, well, why don't we just go all go in a room together? And I facilitated a conversation and a dialogue. Phone numbers were exchanged to talk about, like, not stepping on each other's toes at events and pricing and food and all that, and just sort of, I said, I don't wanna leave it up to you to say you guys are gonna do it. I wanna witness the start of it, the conversation and dialogue. So, um, sort of bridging the gap, like, hey, it's not us versus them. It's like, we can all work together for the greater good. So, um, that was really successful, and they're continuing that. And our next thing we wanna do is the walk-around to look at where type locations would be. And so, we're gonna be scheduling that, and some of the business owners would like to go to. And I think it would ease some of the minds of those that are not inside that square to have them have a say and some buy-in on, on locations that they think would be viable for them during the events as well. So, that's all I can say.
Just to add one other thing too.
Sure.
I'm sorry, um, something that we didn't really discuss a lot was Motor Mondays and their participation. So, if we can kinda gauge that, because for the sidewalk service, we would need to move it off of the street, because it's Motor Mondays, and the cars go in the street and in the parking spots instead of where they would. So, just off the top of my head, I think there's some, some good options already, since they all have patios, um, that, um, we probably wanna identify through that walkthrough as well.
Yeah, I think we'll wanna, I think we need to do some work on Motor Mondays anyway, with people not bringing coolers in, stuff like that, so.
A big social media education piece. I talked to Catherine about that.
Great.
Just really important, we educate everyone that you're gonna enforce a lot more. No coolers, no outside alcohol.
Well, wasn't that a, an original assumption when we first put them together?
It's, it's an enormous...
Yeah.
Yes.
No outside alcohol is, no outside alcohol is, um, but it's...
But people still do.
If you bring a huge cooler, and it's really easy to bring in a couple beers, so. That's what, we're kind of stopping on the, on the coolers.
Sounds good.
You mentioned a meeting with the business owners. Was that after the meeting that I was here with the...
We've had two.
Yeah, we've had two, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to get everybody happier and not so concerned. I think part of the thing that we, you saw at the last meeting that you were at was, um, some of the longtime, um, restaurants and vendors were very concerned about, um, about the amount of competition. And when you start looking at the numbers, they had the opportunity to only have four events in the previous iteration or planning in previous years. Now, this, this year, they would have the opportunity to do seven events between wind down Wednesday and Thursday, Thursday. And if you, then if you count in Motor Mondays, there's eleven events. So, there's a huge, you know, much bigger opportunity for them to participate and, and benefit from people visiting the area.
Word for word, too, too.
Well, he's, he's always had the same amount of work, but, and Phil, and crew. So, um, so that was, that was another kind of education that we went through, as well as understanding what their concerns were with packing up whole kitchens and, and having and, and moving everything, um, and kinda set a, a level playing field by, and by offering the tents. We can, and setting up the tents, and taking the, telling the tents and taking that away from them as a part of the labor, um, is, was really helpful.
Okay.
Amy?
Uh, Arts Council update. We had a meeting, uh, last week, and a representative from the Row Center, Naomi came. And then, uh, she put us in contact with some sculptors in the area. So, we have at least three people. We can bid out the River Sculpture Idea Project. Uh, some concrete, some bronze, but we are gonna get competing quotes from people local to the area. So, that's a good, uh, very good news. Um, and then a second thing, a resident, uh, in the area where we, uh, near Hager, where that strip of land that we bought in everyone's backyard, hoping to re-divide it out among residents. Been wondering what to do with that, 'cause it could be complicated if some don't want it. But, uh, somebody brought us an idea of, we have the DeAngelo Spring, and it needs to drain out that way, like, putting a little wetland creek that could go through there. So, it could be a village-owned, kind of skinny park of a stream. It could just be, um, a better route than just the tube that's under Hager and dishing out somewhere. Uh, so, just something to look into. Not sure if it's feasible or not, but it seemed like a cool idea to not have to section it out and then deal with people only wanting it on either end, and then having a trapped piece of land in the middle, or something like that.
Cool.
Interesting.
All right, that'll take us to staff. Chief, would you like to start?
Uh, I, I had the opportunity to kind of control all the way, the entire parade route. This way, festival hall was attended in person.
Yeah.
Along, uh, you mentioned four-letter words. You have to be willing to use five-letter words along first when it's quiet. Things tend to blow up, right? But I have to report that from a long-term perspective, it was pretty quiet, so.
Good, good.
I like the green stars. Phil? Nope. Okay, and...
No report?
No report. Okay, are we going into the second session? We have none, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you all for coming. We'll see you in another...